I'd like to call to order the St. John's Border Stormwater Management Special Meeting for Monday, November 14th at 6:00 PM. It's actually 6:04 PM for the record. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Joe Gomostego.
Here.
Bill Manasopoulos.
Here.
Bob Zany.
Here. Okay, we're all present.
Sorry. Brian Blazak.
Present.
Joe Wizwati.
Present.
And Bob Vois.
Present.
Thank you, we're all present. Okay. We have minutes from our last meeting from Wednesday, October 19th. Is there any questions, comments? What's the pleasure of the Stormwater Board?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the minutes as presented.
We have a motion on the floor.
I second it.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approves, minutes are approved. Okay, we're actually going to open up the public hearing for the storm water rates. We do have a proof of publication. Mr. Wizwati, you want to comment on any of those and have some opening remarks?
Yeah, so the proof of publications are in order. These were published in the Chicago Tribune and also in the Northwest Indiana Times. So these are in order. The notice was also sent out in the town's water billing, just so that way residents also had more access to notice on that. As you know, we're here today to, for a presentation and discussion on the stormwater rates. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I guess it would be appropriate to open that up to the presenters that are here today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wizwati. So at this point, we're going to open up the floor for public comment with regards to the stormwater rates. So those that would like to speak, please come up to the podium.
Can I ask you a question? How do we know how to respond until we hear the presentation?
That's right.
So, we're going to go ahead and do a public forum before, after the presentation is given. If there's any other questions, we'll also open it up to questions afterwards.
Thank you. Any gentleman in front, please state your name.
Rick Conaway, 12381 West 94th Court. I imagine like everybody else that came here like me tonight, first of all, what is this money you're marked for? Which, again, and I'm not faulting you guys, but if you gave a little presentation, five or 10 minutes, and let everybody know what this is all about, maybe some of these questions wouldn't occur. But, Joe, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Joe.
First of all, we have gone through the process of pinpointing the problem that has been delegated to us by the federal government and the state. So, once we present the whole present, oops, sorry about that. Once we do the presentation for the general public, and this was the purpose, so they could see what's going to occur. What are the objectives and why we're doing it? We're not just going to go throw it out there and just, hey, charge you for something. We need to basically go pinpoint the problem, find out the solutions for it, the objectives and so forth, and once we get down to the bottom, then we'll, our present, the person who's going to do the presentation, basically he'll do a marvelous job so that you can all understand.
Is that going to be this evening?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, then I'll hold my question so I hear the presentation.
Sure. No, 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 that's, I really appreciate that. As a matter of fact, if you don't mind me saying.
I think you should do the presentation first.
That's absolutely true. We are going to do the presentation, so please bear with us. The presentation's going to come first, and then after that, if you have some notes, if you, do you have any pens or paper? Somebody may want to write some notes here. You could actually come back to us and ask us some questions, or ask the gentleman who's going to be doing the presentation. Is that fair with everyone?
So I think, I would say, if you want to come up with some questions, we'll listen to them, and then, more than likely, your questions will be answered through the presentation, so feel free to come up.
Doug Blocker, 10591 Juniper Lane. Read somewhere that this isn't a tax, it's a fee. So I guess my question is, is that, right now, you're currently doing this process. I think you're in MP4, like the second or third year, so I'm assuming you're spending tax money to do whatever you're going to be doing. So, how can you say that this new work isn't going to be taxed, a tax, it's going to be a fee? So I guess, if you're taking that money then out of your taxes and making it a fee, are we going to get a rebate on our taxes then, or lower taxes? Or are you just going to say, hey, this is another way to find money for us to spend more? Second item is, you know, I think part of this is also stormwater management as far as erosion control. That guy's been doing this for, again, two or three years under his new program, and yet, I got, you got a developer that just, this summer cleared a whole southern section on the east side of Klein for another phase, no erosion control. He's got a big mound of dirt on Joel Yett Street, just east of Klein, no erosion control around it. You got, on Park Place, just south of 107th Street, you got a big stockpile of dirt, no erosion control measures. So I guess, why are we going to get charged if you're not going to do anything about it?
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ted Nozel. I live at 12629 Larimer Drive. I'm just wondering, what's this to, is this to put in new storm sewers, or is it, what is it for? Is it for new storm sewers? Because I have natural drainage, and I don't know how it can be charged by my house, I have no storm sewers at all. So, anybody that doesn't have access to storm sewers or any kind of drainage, because it's all natural drainage, you shouldn't be charged. Because you can't, your municipal utility, if you don't provide the service to me, you can't charge me for it.
I think we'll, we'll get that covered in the presentation, sir, and it's all part of the conveyance system, so.
Well, I don't want to be lumped in, because I moved to my house because, you know, I knew what I got into when I moved to my house 33 years ago. And now, you're going to have a, we had a water rate increase, and now we're going to have a storm sewer or another increase. I just retired, and I lived on a budget. So, I'm just worried about how you can charge me, and you're going to have to find out how many residents that don't have, that have natural drainage, and they don't have any kind of store, storm management control. And you could come, you could come down and, and I'll call you guys up, and you can sit in my driveway and watch four inches of water come down my driveway, it's ruining my driveway. So, and I don't want curbs or anything like that, because that's why I moved to the subdivision. That's the way I liked it, that's the way, what attracted me to the house. And I don't want to come in and have them put in sidewalks, curbs, because that's not what I bought the house for.
Okay.
May I make a motion? May I make a motion to move the open floor to the public comments and close public comments after the presentation, because they are frustrated. I sense that frustration in them. They're asking questions, and then once they see the whole presentation, then your questions will be, I mean, answered right there and then, but right now.
I don't think you want to close public comment, I think defer public comment would be.
I'm sorry, you're right. Defer public comment, and then do the presentation, and then you, all of you can ask, and if not, maybe through the presentation, the whole thing will be answered to all of you. That's my, that was my goal, really, and when I saw that open for public comments, I go, woo, that's too early, we have more questions after the presentation, and probably less questions. So I think this was totally wrong. Would you mind if I make a motion to defer the public comments till after the presentation?
So, we have a motion to defer public comments till after presentation? We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second to defer until after the presentation's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Public comment has been deferred. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we're going to move forward with the presentations, or presentation from Joe Moore, who's with ECS, and he's going to talk about the Clean Water Act.
What's ECS?
Oh, okay, Matt Lake will be talking first.
I'm going to turn this this way to approach you guys, just the way I'm talking to you and not to them right now, because I think it's more important to have you guys hear what I have to say. My name's Matt Lake. I'm the Executive Director for the Town of Maryville Stormwater Utility, and I'm here basically as a reference. We've done this, I've been with the town for about 12 years now. We've had a stormwater fee for about 16 years. Before that, I was a consultant, and I dealt with a lot of communities up and down the state of Indiana, mostly Northwest Indiana, and implementing programs like this. A lot of these programs and requirements were thrust upon us by the EPA, that then trickled down to IDIM, and a lot of it started with environmental aspects and regulations for what's called non-point discharges. Let's go into the, a couple of the slides here. I just want to get a little background, obviously, we all know what stormwater is. You know, when it rains, rain comes down, it does travel from high to low within a watershed. And so, these watersheds are drainage areas that ultimately go to receiving water. We're in a very important watershed here, being the Lake Michigan watershed. We got one of the largest sources of fresh water in the world, being Lake Michigan. So everything drains ultimately to Lake Michigan, and so it's highly regulated, not just for Northwest Indiana, but for the country in general, because it's a vital resource. Go ahead.
Isn't it true that everybody north of 93rd, our watershed is?
We've got, there's two divides. There's a north shed and a south shed. The Kankakee actually goes down to the Mississippi and down all the way Gulf of Mexico. So it's like the continental divide for the whole country. It's kind of a unique area that we have here, very important split.
I just wanted to get a correction, because you said this whole area goes to Lake Michigan, and I was pretty sure the southern half of the town does not.
Yes, there's a drainage divide there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. And there's, well, just going back, yeah, there's the, our watersheds and how they're, the subwatersheds and how they're divided out, but if you go back to the other one where it shows Lake Michigan, there, that's kind of where you got the Lake Michigan basin. So, again, a vital resource for the entire country, in fact. So we're very fortunate to have that in our backyard. Let's go, next slide. So, what you have ultimately is water drains off, you have a pipe shed. If you look at the drains on the street, a lot of people think that that goes to the sanitary system. It does not. It ultimately goes into the nearest lake, river, stream. And those lakes, rivers and streams are highly regulated by IDIM and the Corps of Engineers. So they got federal and state protection. Seeing that, we are under a permit, just as you guys are. It used to be called Rule 13, and that rule states that if you have an MS4, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system, you are regulated to make sure that whatever goes into those receiving waters is of a certain standard quality, and you have to follow what are called minimum control measures. There's a lot of paperwork and regulation that goes along with that, that we have to comply with. Obviously, we have a kind of a half-urban-ag land use. You guys, I don't know if you guys are kind of made up the same, you guys about half-developed, and the other half yet to be developed. Yeah, so with that development, you got a lot of impervious surface, a lot of runoff, a lot of pollutants carrying over that land into our receiving waters. Also, on the agricultural side, it's not just the urban side. So, on the ag side, and I worked, I was with DNR for many years, worked with NRCS, we did a lot of the farm bill programs, and I can tell you, soil loss is a massive problem on farm ground. And so that's why you have USDA and NRCS, in order to keep soil on the ground, so that you have vital soil for crops and things like that. So there's a lot of programs for the agricultural side, not so much for the urban side. But, the urban and ag are both contributors to pollution in our waterways. Next slide. So again, why is stormwater an issue? EPA has identified stormwater as a leading source of water pollution to nearly 40% of surveyed water bodies in the US. The pollutants of concern are usually nutrients, sediment, pathogens, oil, grease, metals, things that get in our waterways that are detrimental to life. Next slide. So, you've got two factions here. You've got the water quality side with the EPA, which is a vital thing, and you also have water quantity, something everybody else is concerned about, flooding. That's all regulated through FEMA. And so, so you've got a water quality side and a water quantity side when it comes to stormwater management. Next slide. So again, at the time, IDIM had different rules. You had Rule 5, so I mentioned the construction sites and regulating that, and making sure you minimize pollutants off of construction sites. If you don't have the staffing or resources, that's very difficult to do, because a construction site can be perfect one day, and the next day, just everything tore up, and everything is a big mess and all over the place, and on the streets. You have Rule 6, which is stormwater discharge associated with industrial activities, and then you have Rule 13, which is what the municipality has a permit under. Next slide. With that, we created a stormwater quality management plan, I believe as you guys did as well, to comply with the state rule and implement that accordingly. Next slide. So with that, there's a lot of audits and paperwork and things like that, in order to make sure that we are in compliance with state rules and regulations. If not, the fees and fines can be significant. Next slide. Again, you have urban and rural potential sources of pollutants, and so, on the urban side, it's because of a lot of the impervious surface and other activities that are associated with urban activities. And the rule, you have different tillage practices, manure management, failing septic and things like that. Next slide. So there's a lot of impacts to impervious surface. You increase your velocities, your peak discharges, your volume of your runoff, it increases the amount of flooding, and you get less infiltration. Next slide. This is what '08 looked like for us. I don't know what you guys had going on in '08, but when you got six, nine inches of water in 48 hours, very significant, and with that, we reacted swiftly in order to address these events. It's not, it's not a matter of if something like this will happen again, it's a matter of when. Next slide. So, we created our stormwater utility, we have our own staffing, we have our own equipment, we have our own facility, we have our own projects, and obviously, we have, we have our own funding with that. Next slide. Stormwater management has a lot of different layers to it. You have the flood control, you have the infrastructure, not only new infrastructure and fixing old problems, but replacing old infrastructure. I could show you a lot of pictures, I think some of them are tied to some of these slides. Old CMP in the ground, that's just rotting away under the ground, because there weren't stormwater utilities for many, many, many years. So there's a lot of catch-up work to do. So we do a lot of pipe replacement, catch basin replacement. If you see sinkholes in the road, that's usually because it's a failing pipe. And looking at flood control and studying areas to make sure that when a 100-year rain happens, that people don't lose their homes. And we've saved a lot of homes in the process. I could tell you, we brought in many millions of dollars in grant money. We leveraged our stormwater utility fees with grants, and brought in a lot of dollars into our municipality. We also do all the GIS and mapping. We do all the compliance for anything environmental. We get into urban forestry, low-impact development. We're also part of our economic development team, which is really important. Economic development for us is vital. Right now, we're booming with commercial, industrial, especially on the industrial side, bringing in millions and millions of dollars in taxes, so not to mention TIF money. Next slide. So, a lot of communities have, you know, stormwater management may be embedded in some of the other departments. We decided to do it differently. We created our own stormwater department, so we're completely separate in terms of, again, our funding, our staffing, our equipment, our projects, so we could focus on that. And we took a lot of things off of Public Works' plate. A lot, a lot of times, right now, they're trying to improvise and trying to fill in the gaps here and there, but I could tell you, it doesn't work very well. And the way we set it up, we've made massive strides with an infrastructure improvement within our community. Next slide. So, the way we did it, is we did a stormwater fee, and we started out at $5 a month residential, and we did a flat fee by land use code. And so, the way that worked was, we put it on the tax bill. And we ended up doing this for a couple reasons. One is the tax bill is a great vehicle to get, to get bills out there. Number two, it touches every single parcel. So if you were to do it on a utility bill, those vacant parcels that are there, wouldn't get any utility bills, any stormwater fee bill. So, we touch every single parcel within the, within the community, which is actually by state law as well, we referenced that through our attorney, who reminded us about that. And it's same thing for like pipeline projects, or parcels, railroad parcels, we even charge ourselves. So, so that's, that's the way we've done it. Every fall, we get a data dump of parcels from the county, we tag them with our fee, and then it ends up on the tax bill. And how many of you guys have mortgages? No one else? Well, with that, you probably have, have to have flood insurance. Does anybody here have flood insurance? If you have, if you have a mortgage, your lender's going to require you to have flood insurance.
Current flood zone?
No. Because you need a low-risk policy. There's low-risk, low-risk policies and high-risk policies. I would, I'd recommend you look at, look at your policy. So, pretty much everybody's going to have flood insurance within a community that has a mortgage. Yes. So with that, we are part of a program called the CRS Program. This is done through FEMA. This is something that we've done voluntarily in order to lower everybody's flood insurance. And the amount that we lower our flood insurance by is more than our stormwater fee. So, people automatically get that, they don't even realize it until we tell them in our newsletters and things like that, what's happening with the CRS Program. For, for, for low-risk policies, it's, it's about 10%, for high-risk policies, it's 15%. And we're going to rank even better once the state changes their laws, and so when that happens, we're going to end up with a higher percent discount for all of our residents that have flood insurance. Next slide. One of the first things I did, I created goals for myself. One was to have a master plan, knowing that the community has a lot of existing problems, because we want to address the existing problems first. Because people have been living with, you know, poor drainage and flooding and things like that, and it's not just flooding on a property, it's flooding for your infrastructure. Everybody uses the roads, right? You guys drive everywhere, use your roads, so from that standpoint, if you're, if roads are overtopping, you can't get through, emergency services, those are some of the things that we studied, is where are the worst areas in town that we're going to have to focus these dollars on? Because you can't just arbitrarily say, okay, well, we got, we're just going to spend money on what we feel like spending it on. We prioritize, and we go with a game plan that, that we have in terms of projects within our stormwater master plan. Next slide. I'll try to go faster, because I love it. So, this is kind of a breakdown of our staffing. Next slide. We have our own facility, Stormwater Resource Center. It houses our staff, our equipment. We have a meeting room like this, that we do training in, we hold, host our meetings, we host events. Because one of the things that we have to do with stormwater management, well, there's there's six minimum control measures, one is public education outreach. And so that's important, that you educate the public on what it's all about, and what the utility does, but also what residents can do to help themselves and help the community. Next. Some of our equipment, you kind of wonder, what does a stormwater utility need? We've got a camera truck, so that we can camera all the lines, see where defects are in lines, so we know where to make repairs. We got a jet vac truck, that's for cleaning all the storm drains, the catch basins, get the sediment, residual amount of solids out of there, make sure it's functioning properly at full capacity. Now, we've got a dump truck, backhoe. We also have something called a marshmaster that's not on here. It's an industrial-sized mower that literally will float in water, and it's for mowing ponds and things like that. So if you see the ponds with the big frag mighties growing in it and everything else, it would be impossible to mow it otherwise without a big piece of equipment like that.
Matt, could you, just for the record, kind of mention quickly what ballpark numbers are for what this equipment costs, since it's quite impressive, I guess?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the camera trucks, like, $250. The jet vac can be anywhere from $500 to $700,000. You know, so you're talking big dollars, you know?
What's the, this, I call it a swamp bug.
Oh, the marshmaster, that was about $84,000 with the trailer.
Cheapest piece of equipment you've got, right?
Close, close.
Pretty close, yeah.
Not to interrupt, but I did get a quote for one of those, and it's up to $240 with the trailer.
$240?
Yes.
Oh, well, we've got a deal then.
Yes.
So, so, yeah, you, you create the utility, again, physically. In order to know where you spend your big dollars, you got your master plan. And, go ahead.
Well, if all that equipment was all paid for through the program?
Yes, yes, they had nothing. They didn't have a building, no equipment, nothing. Everything came through, through the stormwater fee.
The building was also paid for fire damage, or did you have something?
All of it. We don't ask a dime from the general fund from the town. Not only that, we bring in, bring in a lot of dollars from grants. And little Cal money, we applied a little Cal, River Basin Commission for money, I got several, probably brought in over a million dollars, since I've been applying to that. We applied to DNR, EPA, we get NERC money, we get, you know, it's, again, we, we bring in a lot of dollars just through our utility and our efforts, but you need staffing and everybody else to do that, and otherwise, otherwise you're not going to get the grants. So, part of, part of the reason we got grants, too, is because we have a stormwater master plan. We point to that plan, because that's all the hydraulic studies that were done, we did nine drainage studies throughout the town. And with that, we identified areas that needed to be addressed, because again, town never had a stormwater utility before. There's a lot of old problems, so you're playing catch-up from the start. Next slide.
You got a question?
Go ahead.
A gentleman has a question.
To the left of you.
You said, when you were charging each residential home in Maryville, when you started, it was $5.
Five, $5.
Still $5?
We increased it probably, maybe three, three years ago, to $9. Yeah.
Every parcel, not home, you said?
Right.
Yeah, every parcel, I don't care.
Yeah.
I understand, thanks, Bill.
Yeah. This, so here's a kind of breakdown of what we did. We studied our urbanized portions of Maryville, and so, we looked at each, each sub watershed, and we identified the issues within each one. Next slide. With that, we looked at inundation areas, structures that were at risk, and again, we're trying to keep people out of harm's way by implementing projects, and when I talk about projects, I'm talking, you know, two, $3 million projects at a time. Go ahead.
Two questions. I don't know how it affects me, because I got natural drainage, so I have no stormwater control at all.
Okay.
And then, the second question is, is that you were saying something about absorption and erosion in farm fields?
Mm-hmm.
But, once you start putting subdivisions in, you have less square footage for absorption in those fields. So you have concrete driveways, you have streets, you have?
Impervious, yeah.
You have buildings.
Yes.
So everything's shutting off.
Right, right.
So now, you're making the problem worse.
That's, that's the thing about development, is we have to, we're impacting the environment, and so how do we combat that? Is through detention, and try to retain that water and release at a controlled release rate. That's where the engineering, and that's another whole layer of this, is plan reviews. Every plan that comes to the town, we review diligently, and we go through, we make their engineers, the developers' engineers, implement all of the proper ordinance requirements, so that you're not flooding somebody else downstream. So that's where all the, all the engineering and science comes, when you do developments. But you talked about, like, the agriculture, yeah, you don't have as much impervious surface, obviously, in a farm field, right? But you do have runoff. And with that runoff comes all the nutrients and the pesticides that you put on the ground. I could show you, show you all the studies and things that we've done when I was with the DNR, and how that impacts the waterways, and all the sediment that ends up in the waterways, too. When you fill a ditch with sediment, what happens? The capacity of that ditch to convey water is diminished, so you have to dredge it out. That's why the Lake County Surveyors' Office is dredging out all the ditches, all, all over Lake County. So that's, that's an important aspect. So ag does have a big impact, urban has an impact. It's not just one or the other. Now, you say you don't have any physical structures, you may have a culvert and a ditch and a swale that runs off, but your water's going somewhere, too. So you're?
I don't have a swale, it's all natural drainage.
No, you said, you said drainage. Drainage, drainage means it goes somewhere. All water goes somewhere.
The water's got a lot of erosion because of the water that comes off of 93rd.
Yeah.
And then if they want to build where the old farm is?
Yeah.
On white, there's going to be more water coming out of there.
Yeah. And then that's another thing, is we fixed a lot of existing problems with new development. We'll make a developer put in other remedies in order to diminish issues and problems that have occurred adjacent to... Not only that, we've studied areas like in Broadfield, for example. We had a special study that was done in Broadfield subdivision, flooded out terribly in '08. And when a developer came to develop that area, we held them to the standard of the study beyond the ordinance. So that hit, his detention was massive. So they got way more protection than they otherwise would have had because of the development. So actually, and I can tell you what, through our plan reviews, we put the developers to the wringer, in order to protect the existing residents. Because that's number one to us, you know? The people that have invested and lived here for a long time, or even a short time, they're the ones that we're looking out for. And I always look at it like, what if that development occurred next to my house, how would I look at this plan? You know?
I brought this up with the boyers, putting in the industrial caplets here and strip law and everything.
Okay.
I wanted the town to put a hold on all future residential and a commercial development, until they gave the town residents a comprehensive plan, on what they were going to do with the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, and everything else.
Correct.
But it's like down here, it's like, they don't think you know it. You know, I've owned homes for 34 years, I know how long it goes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then we used to have to maintain the ditches because of the county, you had to put it back, or you'd come back and...
Maintenance is key, and knowing the existing infrastructure. We've had developments going where we bypassed the water, we had to bypass the water around because the existing infrastructure and subdivision was deteriorating to the point where the town didn't have time, enough time to replace everything by the time this other development occurred. You know, so you're right, you've got to look at existing infrastructure, what things are being tied into. It's got to be maintained, that's key. And I can tell you this, a lot of it's old CMP, corrugated metal pipe, deteriorate in the ground. Nowadays, you have high-density polyethylene, you have polymer-coated CMP, stuff that lasts 100-plus years. The old galvanized pipe and stuff they put in the ground back then just doesn't cut it, and it's rotten away in the ground right now. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, just quickly, Matt and I are co-presenting tonight. I want to introduce myself before I start the comments, so everyone knows who I am and why I'm here. I think some great points are being brought up. I want to start with a few questions and an introduction of who I am. I lived in this town for 14 years.
Joe, can you use the mic? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I lived in this town for 14 years. Is that better, everyone can hear me? In those 14 years I lived here, I had, I'm an entrepreneur, I have a couple of businesses. I owned a custom home-building company. I built a lot of homes in this community. I've dealt with every layer of town management here, from the building inspection to the MS4, to the town management, to Wayne, who's sitting here, who used to work for the water department. Right? So a lot of years here in town. Before that, I'm just going to back up to tell you how I got here. I went to Purdue University. I ended up out of Purdue, working for one of the largest home builders in the country. When I worked for that home builder, we had $0 in our erosion and sediment control budget, which means we didn't care, right? Or we didn't know, it was one of the two. Now, I like to think that we're all good people, right? So it wasn't that we didn't care, we just didn't know. So the point of tonight is for all of us to know, to get some education, right? And so for us to get the education to understand why we're here, you said it's falling on deaf ears, right? It's falling on deaf ears.
When I was here before, when I told them that they needed to stop all the building and everything like that, until they gave us a comprehensive plan, and they're still building like crazy.
Yeah.
I knew here there was 5,000 residents, if there was 5,000, now there's 20,000.
I was with you for that growth.
I was here waiting for you.
Yeah, great, great. And we all felt the pain of it, right? The reason I got involved with the town is because there was a pond in my neighborhood that during the plan review process, the town, by not knowing, these guys aren't bad guys, they're actually great guys if you get to know them, and it wasn't these guys, it was guys before these guys. But what happened is the town agreed to take all the common ground. Now, why would the developer give the common ground to the town, Matt?
Take it off his plate?
To take it off his plate, why?
Because it's cheaper?
Anyone here like spending more money? If you do, raise your hand. I do not, right? Politically, this is not a political issue, right? On the political side of things, I would never vote for a new tax, ever. That's who I am, right? This is not a political issue. This is an issue that's a health issue, and it's a safety issue. Who grew up in the region? Raise your hand.
Can you just tell us who you are?
Yeah, sure. Sure, Joe Moore.
I've been here for 14 years, I've been here for 58, so tell me about it.
Great, Joe.
What are you selling?
Yeah, I'm not selling anything.
Sounds like you're selling.
Nope. But, yeah, I don't want to, it doesn't need to sound like sales. What I want you to hear is, we don't know what we should know about...
You say "we," what are you, or do you...
All of us. I do not represent the town, I do not work for the town. My name's Joe Moore. I was a resident of this town that was impacted by stormwater, or the lack of a stormwater program. The knowledge that I have professionally, I had a building company, I, at a certain point in time in my career, was challenged by a St. John MS4 to use...
What's an MS4?
Great, that's why we're here. What's an MS4? It's, an MS4, currently, the town of St. John, has Bob Valloy. Bob is responsible for running an entire program for this town. And when I say he's responsible, the MS4 program is instituted by the federal government, the EPA. So right now, there's a permit process where the state and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management has said to the town, you have to have a permit with us. And in this permit, you have to agree to do these things. All of these things. And that's about 150 pages of law for the town. Right now, the town is not satisfying the state law. And the result of that is pollution, and a very serious pollution. Right? So I'm not selling anything other than public health. And I'm selling that because I've lived here.
You've been talking for three minutes, I still don't know what you're going to do.
Yeah.
Did you finish?
Yeah.
And then write out questions?
Yeah, I would love to. Yeah. So, yep, I agree. Is that okay? So quickly, the reason I'm asking who grew up in the region, who remembers the issue with our air quality in the 80s? Did we have an air quality issue?
Yeah, but I would like to say I'm finishing first, and you're talking this is an ordinary matter. Please, would you finish? I would be delighted.
Sure, sure, sure. I just want to answer your question, what an MS4 is. It's an acronym that stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. That means that, you know, they used to have combined systems where sanitary and storm went together, and you just had the pipe. And that pipe would go off and then go into the, you know, hopefully, a water treatment plant. But our system is completely separate, and you have to be separate. So that sanitary goes into sanitary pipes, goes to a water treatment plant. Storm goes to the Lake River stream, and it ends up discharging there. And so that's the environmental side. But there's also a very important side, is the flood control side, which is looking at the studies that were done. And that's the first thing I did, and again, I'm not here to sell you anything, I'm just here as a reference for you guys, to show you what we did. And so one of the first things I did, I said, look, we need a stormwater master plan. We need to study all the urbanized portions within our community, so we know where to spend dollars. We're not just going to have a stormwater fee and not know where to spend the big dollars. Okay? And so this gave us a roadmap to that. So protecting people's homes was number one. And you can see, like, in purple, where inundation areas are when we do have heavy rains. And that's an issue where these people are required to have a high-risk flood insurance policy. That high-risk flood insurance policy is very expensive, and getting more expensive because it's through FEMA. If you know anything about FEMA, and their lack of management, and the amount of money they spend, and how in debt they are, you'll know that rates don't go down, they go up. And so that's a problem for everybody that has a high-risk policy. Your home is your biggest investment. And for those that are in a high-risk flood zone, good luck trying to sell your home. Because as soon as somebody finds that out, it's hard to sell. It's like tacking on an additional $4,000, $3,000, $4,000 of a tax every year, not knowing how much higher that can go in the future. Next slide. So this is another thing that touches everybody, and these are your known roadway overtopping. If you have issues where your roads are not passable during high-storm events, guess what? It affects everybody. If an ambulance is trying to come to your house, guess what? If they can't get through, and we've had that in Maryville, we've corrected a lot of this, again, by putting in regional detention basins, again, not cheap, very expensive, by changing the sizing of our culverts, so that we can hold water back in different areas and allow it to pass through in others, so that when you have different storm events, that it can flow through there efficiently without backing up and overtopping roadways. I've seen, and I've got pictures of cars that have hydroplaned and gone off the road because of poor drainage. And again, so we all use the roads. The roads have drainage associated with them. They all have catch basins, valve, curb, and gutter. I like the grass swales, that's my favorite. I'd rather have the natural drainage, the rural type. And I always say, when it comes to green infrastructure, we almost have to regress to progress. We have to go back to grass swales and that natural drainage. Because A, it's better for the environment, there's more, what I call fighter remediation, the plants, the grass, will literally absorb and take up that water, the soil will take up some of that water. And then also, they're easier to maintain, and they're cheaper and easier to sell. So it's the best way to go, but that's my view on it. Next slide. We also had different prioritizations within the different watersheds. So we have projects listed with each one of these watersheds. We have some engineers' estimates at the time of what it would cost. And as you know, with things, pricing, it always goes up over time. The cheapest time to do something is now. And so if you look around us, you have stormwater fees in Gary, and Crown Point, and Dyer, and Munster, Maryville, they're all over. This is nothing new. The advantage you have is that you could learn from everybody else. And learn from the things that, the things that we've done, okay, we could have done this better. We are completely transparent, we'll share anything and everything we have. All of our brochures, all of our budgets, all of our, you know, studies that were done. Because, again, water doesn't know political boundaries. So we all work together in the stormwater arena. We don't look at it as, this is our municipal area, this is yours. Our water goes into, you know, into Hobart, some of Sherrville's water comes to us, Gary's water comes to us. We all have to work together, because we're all in a watershed together. So we meet, we formed a group called NICEWAG, the Northwest Indiana Stormwater Advisory Group. We get together, and we share everything. Like I said, they, you guys can have access, and I've given you stuff from things that we developed, we spent money developing ordinances and things like that, we hired attorneys and all that stuff. You guys got the advantage of just taking that and redoing it, tweaking it, and then passing it as you see fit, whatever's best for your town. Next slide. And again, this is another delineation of inundation areas, just to give you an idea, I'm not going to dwell too much on this. Next. Project implementation, what do you do with the money? One of our first projects was our Taff Street Drainage Improvement Project. This is a little over $2 million. We got 20 acre-feet of storage. When an acre-foot is, imagine an acre and one foot of water, that's the amount of volume an acre-foot is. Pretty simple. But we put the money to work as soon as we possibly could. We did leverage with grant money. Next slide. And so areas of town that had massive flooding, people, again, having to reclaim losses and to what we call repeat-loss properties for flood insurance, we had whole neighborhoods underwater. I could show you pictures of people in boats in a neighborhood, you know? And it's not fun. And what is fun is driving through there now, when we get heavy rains, and not seeing anything. No ponding, nothing. It's incredible, the amount of progress we've made with all the different projects we've done. This is just one example of that. Next slide. So just all over town, you're going to see different projects happening. You'll see old infrastructure getting replaced. You'll see stormwater being stored in large basins like you see down the lower right. So, again, that water has to be parked somewhere and sit for a while until it drains off after the rains. Otherwise, it's going to be flooding your streets, it's going to be flooding neighborhoods. That's what we've experienced. And this was our remedy to that. So this project was part of the study. Next slide. This is what a lot of the underground pipe looks like. Old crummy CMP falling apart, again, just ready to collapse. We focus a lot of the, on the culverts, the larger ones, knowing that if a collapse occurs, what happens then is a very dangerous situation for somebody passing through there. Next slide. Again, just more examples of that. Here's, we're actually, in some of these neighborhoods, and now we've passed a policy of ours that we use high-density polyethylene, but not only the regular high-density polyethylene, 60% of our pipe is from recycled materials. So we actually won a governor's award for that, to implement green practices within our materials. And so I think that was an important thing. And again, it's 100-plus-year pipe, and we're putting it in all over town. You can see the before, that's a street that's, you know, looks like you could drive a gondola through, looks like Sicily, after we put in all our new infrastructure. And that had catch basins, it's not like it didn't have catch basins, it was just all deteriorated. So the infrastructure was there, it just failed over the years. So we replaced it all.
Matt, what did that turn into for those houses? Wet basements?
Oh, yeah, there was, I had, like, eight people on that block that wanted to move. They're like, I'm out. I said, just stick around. We're going to, we're going to do this. We're going to, we're going to take care of you, I don't want you to move, I want to make sure that, you know, we're, because they figured, you know, what the next person doesn't know doesn't hurt them, but it does, it hurts the next person. I want to solve the problem. And I can tell you, afterwards, they thank us so many times for saving the neighborhood, you know? And we have a lot of these neighborhoods. Next. Yeah, and this is what construction looks like, not pretty, but it gets done. Next. The regional coordination I talked about, again, we're not all in a bubble here. So we formed NICEWAG, the Northwest Indiana Stormwater Advisory Group, and representatives get together once a month, and we talk about projects. We talk about the compliance things that we have to implement, our audits. We share information about audits, if you get audited, yeah, what they ask about. Or if you're a neighboring community, can we get some of your hydraulic data to help out our area? Because we're going to be looking at a study over here, and, you know, your water comes to us, so it's going to be cheaper to share your information that was already engineered and designed. So, again, we work collaboratively together because, you know, like I said, water doesn't know political boundaries, doesn't stop at the municipal boundary and go around. GIS, which Jason knows a lot about, I'm also the GIS guy by default for Maryville, so we mapped all of our infrastructure. So we have a map atlas of all of our pipes, all of our structures, sizing, materials, lengths. sizing, materials, lengths. We also do dry weather screening associated with that. What dry weather screening is, is when you're mapping or looking into a catch basin, if you see flow and it hasn't rained in two or three days, someone's illegally tied in somewhere. Someone's washing machine, someone's sanitary pipe, something is not right. So, you've got to trace that back, and you have to remedy that. So, that's part of the, one of the requirements for NMS4 community. Next. Flood mapping. We use the FEMA flood maps. We also look at all the properties that the 100-year flood zone, Zone A, touches. We work closely with our planning and building department. Again, we review every single plan that comes across, and we make sure that that plan is perfect, as well as, you know, maybe solving a problem adjacent to it. We don't want new development to cause problems in the town. We never, never want that. And we have additional requirements, I'm not sure if it's on here, with low-impact development requirements, but that might be in here. Next slide. I also do all the tree stuff. So, anything that is environmental, so I deal with all the street trees by default. I used to be the state urban forester for Indiana for DNR. So, I covered all 92 counties and the state of Indiana. So, we've inventoried all of our street trees. We've also just recently did what I would consider a risk tree, risk tree management program. We removed a lot of the older trees and a couple subdivisions because they were just all hobbled out. Old silver maples mostly within the parkways. And we had some American Rescue Plan dollars that we used for that. It was like a one-time deal. We had money to do it. So, we sanitize those areas, and then now we're looking to replant those areas with proper trees, what we call right tree, right place, within the urban forestry arena. Next. We wrote our stormwater ordinance and technical standards manual. Again, this is what the developers have to follow in order to get a stormwater permit. If you do not get a stormwater permit, you cannot build in the town of Mariville. Period. So, I hold that card, and I hold it close, and I make sure that things are done right. You know, again, if we're reviewing a plan and there's pending comments, we will hold that project up until it is done right.
What do you charge for a permit?
That's a great question. I personally don't charge anything. The review fees for our engineering firm, guess what the town pays? Zero. We have an ordinance in town that says the developer pays all review fees. So, again, so the review fees that developer pays for is whatever the engineering firm charges. So, let's say your plan is great. Your review fees are less, because there's less back and forth. Okay? If your plans come in and they're garbage, it's going to go back and forth so many times until the developer calls up his client, which is his engineer, and says, "What's going on here? You know, I'm getting all these bills." Well, here's all the comments have gone back and forth four and five times. We don't want to do that. We want to get back and forth as little as possible. So, that's why we offer developers and their engineers coming early and talk about the project, talk about the requirements, especially if you're a firm or developer from out of town. You never built in the area before, you're not familiar with the rules and regulations. We will guide you through it. You know, again, we want them to have a good plan. That's the goal.
If he asks for a plan...
Yes.
Then who ensures that it's implemented?
Oh, we do, actually. I...
Does he pay for throughout inspections or anything like that?
No, no. But he will pay fees if we find something wrong. And we've done a lot of that, too. We issue citations. I've got a compliance inspector that works for me, goes and checks out all the sites. If something's off, you'll get first an NOV. If it's immediate danger to life and health, we expect to shut down the site. We can still do that through the planning and building department and shut down the site completely until it's remedied. Otherwise, you'll get a citation. It looks exactly like a police ticket. You know why? Because it is. We call it voice products. We have a stormwater ticket book, same as that. You either pay it at the clerk treasurer's office, or you go to court. And it's $200 usually per site, for violation. You could actually have a violation every day, you know, per day per violation. So, it could add up to a lot of dollars. Again, that's not our goal, because it takes us time and things like that. We have our own attorney. That's another thing. So, when our stormwater board meets, we have our attorney there. We have our financial advisor there. And so, those are our two key outside consultants, and then sometimes our engineering firm is there. And actually, I have seven different engineering firms I use. I don't pull them out of my basket. I've got several firms that I use. Next slide. Low-impact development. This is something that nobody else has that we've implemented. Next slide. So, we have requirements for, environmental requirements for our developers. Next. So, we introduced low-impact development years ago, and basically how it works is for every acre of development, you need three low-impact development BMPs. And the BMPs and the quantities of those BMPs determine how many points they're worth. Next.
What is a BMP?
A best management practice. Sorry. We all take the acronyms. I've got actually a list of acronyms. It's on our website, because the layperson that's, we, like MS4 and all these things, we talk about BMPs. It's like, they roll off our tongue, but yeah. It's just basically a practice like, let's say, a rain garden, or a grass swale. That's a BMP. You know, a green roof. So, different practices like that, infiltration basins, using recycled materials. You know, these are things that help out, lessen our impact to the environment, let's say. Next slide. So, it's literally low-impact development for stormwater management in our ordinance. Next slide. So, again, we revise our ordinance accordingly many years ago. Next. It's a basic point system that we use. Again, I'm not going to dwell too much on this, because this is kind of next-level stuff. You guys are kind of just getting started on this type of aspect. Next slide. There's a worksheet that the developer and their engineer fill out.
Matt?
Yeah.
I was going to say, if, just for interest of everybody, if we can kind of get close to closing up, and then we can move on.
No problem. Okay, next slide. And just keep rolling through these. So, go back to the planner. This is the great part, is when a developer and their engineer sees this, they come to my office, and we sit down, we talk about the site. Because not every site can fit different practices. So, we literally serve as a free consultant to the developer to help him out with the site. Next. Keep going. Just kind of roll through these. These are actual plans with different practices on them. Some of these are older rain gardens and things like that. Others, keep going. Rain gardens here and there. It's a very popular BMP. So, again, if you want to improve the environment, some of these practices here, this is how you do it through development. And this costs the town nothing. A lot of the corporations like Starbucks, we made them do a rain garden through the, this is point-blank gun range there. This is a low-mo fescue. This is basically what I call low-hanging fruit ribbon curb with a little rain garden in the middle, drain in the middle. You keep rolling through these. Solar panels, solar companies. This is a pervious brick. Again, less runoff. That's good for us. For wetlands and rain gardens, it's really good in the wintertime. Merplex, that's the grass swales with the flumes. More grass swales, like the grass swales. Again, green infrastructure, that, it makes a big difference to reduce your pollutant and your runoff. I think some of these might repeat a little bit. We just threw this together real quick.
Question in the back.
Go ahead.
Hey, that's all the funny advantage in Mariville. We live here in St. John. I know I got here late, but you guys want to sit here and charge me another $108 a year? I'm paying $40 already for this Calumet River. What the hell is $108 one year to sit here and show me this?
I think you got here late.
What, I'm just saying, what are we paying for? Is this for this riverwalk thing that they want to put in?
I'm going to help answer that. I'm going to help answer that. I heard it was falling on deaf ears. I want to help answer that by telling you who I am real quick, because that question was asked. I'm a certified stormwater professional that's been in the industry for 14 years. I work on this nationally. St. John's my backyard, right? I see what's happening to the town as a result of these things not happening like they're supposed to, by federal law, by state law. The town right now has a huge exposure because they're not following the state law. The town has to do some of these things that they're doing. When we say, "Hey, I need to de-charge this," right? I just heard someone say, "This is all falling on deaf ears." It's falling on deaf ears because the town doesn't have the money to run the program. The town doesn't have the money to run the program that the federal government and the state government are required. There's only one way to get those dollars, right? It's not a business.
Joe, I'm sorry. No, this is Joe. Are we, is this, okay, I think we're kind of losing here. Matt, if you'd like to wrap up, and then we'll get...
I've got one other question for you, okay?
We're going to take your guys' questions. We're going to let him wrap up and take everyone's questions.
Yeah, they'll have public comment where you can come up and state your name and all that. Yeah. And I talked earlier about the infrastructure replacement and things like that. So, there was a lot of stuff you missed.
About Mariville.
I'm just here as a reference. I'm not here to convince you of anything. I'm here that, because we've been through it from start to finish. And again, I could show you the dollars that we brought in on top of that, but go ahead, keep going. This is the recycled pipe. It's an old versus new going in, again, throughout the neighborhoods. So, that wraps me up for right now.
Can I just get a quick showing? Who's concerned with money? What's the cost?
That's not even a question.
So, Matt just showed you a lot of great things. Everyone's going to serve the cost, right? Matt, has your program in Mariville been revenue positive or revenue negative?
Oh, we've...
For the town of Mariville and for its residents?
Yeah, we've, we brought in, like I said, you know, probably $4 or $5 million in revenue, just from grants and other things outside of the stormwater fee. Not to mention all of the savings for when people, we save their homes, like I showed you those neighborhoods. That's their livelihood. That's their future. Not to mention all the road overtoppings we've addressed, not to mention all the old infrastructure and the sinkholes and everything else that we've addressed, not to mention all of the revenue being on the economic development team, which I think is vitally important, to bring in good development into your community and have it scrutinized through an economic development team.
So, Matt, the flood insurance thing that you mentioned...
Oh, CRS, yeah, yeah.
CRS program. The flood insurance, there are flood zones. Every house has some sort of zoning, whether it's zone, no flood, no flood problem at all, medium flood zone X, flood zone Y. Okay, so with that scenario, when you have that FEMA certification, it discounts homeowners insurance across the board.
15%. And that's one thing, if I was a resident here, what I would, I would demand...
What's your rating?
We're seven. It's the highest rating in the state of Indiana right now. That's the highest we can rank because of state laws, state building codes. If they change those, we'd probably rank about a five. So, and what that is, is an ISO rating for stormwater. Again, it lowers flood insurance. So, again, if I was a resident, I would want a commitment from the town that they would be going into the CRS program, because that directly would save me money. So, that's what I would want.
So, being a resident of the town for all these years and seeing the work of the town from multiple aspects, the town hasn't had the authority to do the things that the town in Mariville is doing, right? That certification alone by itself would equate to about $100 if your average is $100 in homeowners insurance per month. That would equate to about $100 of the fee alone. Your turn, Mr. Moore. I'm eliminating all risks. Not only, you mentioned it, or I mentioned the helping back, and what the largest pools that are waterways are now. I mentioned steel building, the way it deals with the town. You feel it's open to something large. The town doesn't have a choice by law.
Hey, guys.
Can we actually go back to the presentation?
Wrap up the presentation, then we'll go with the back and forth.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for me specifically? Just, because I'm just here as a reference. Not here to convince you of anything. I get nothing out of it personally. So, just, so go ahead and ask me a question.
You brought up, or Mr. Moore, you brought up something here about the dragon, which I understand being, uh, doing it the right way or the wrong way years ago? Am I right or wrong on that?
So, I referenced a specific development that I am resident in, where drainage areas and other areas of the community were donated to the town by the developer. The town took those areas. The town then becomes financially responsible.
And liable, and legally liable. If someone drowns in a pond or something happens, again, that's why I'm a big fan of dry basins and things like that, just because they're safer. I know some people want water in there, so...
I didn't interrupt. I'm concerned more was on the residential. As much of the commercial or donated property is converted, uh, that 96 state...
It is residential, too, because every one of your subdivisions will have a stormwater detention pond. Typically, the HOA is the one that owns that and manages that. It sounds like the town, or St. John, that you guys had a policy or something in place that the town takes ownership.
It was an agreement between the developer and the town at that point in time. But the reality, the reality of that situation was, the town simply didn't know, right? The town didn't know. They thought they were doing a great thing for the residents that were here. The impact of that, for me personally, 15 years later, was a pond in my backyard that completely dried up. Every fish in it died. The smell was unbelievable. And the reason it all happened was because we had an introduction of invasive grass species because of all the sanitation that was allowed to go where it was supposed to kill, right? The planner due process, what's happened in the background, the town putting together a stormwater utility board, the town having engineers involved, they'll go, "Blizzard of plants," and they come through and say, "Okay, these are the things that are supposed to happen." Before those plants, we're simply just going to the building department, and a building inspector that's no longer here, who didn't have all the formal education in that, was tasked with saying, "Hey, this is good or it's not," right? And that was simply from the aspect of the town was trying to operate off of a budget, right? A budget that didn't exist.
Got you. Got a question?
I hate to cut people off, but is there any more presentation in what this gentleman...
I was just entertaining questions, like, well, I think...
Sure. I have a list of questions that attach to the board.
Okay, well, if we can, if I may, if we can finish up with the presentation.
I'm basically done. I was just asking if anybody had any other questions.
Then we can entertain questions where people can actually hear what's going on.
Yeah, they're done. Sure.
The public can't even hear what's going on.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Again, Rick Conaway, 12381, West 94th Court, St. John. I've got four quick questions. You're proposing $18 a month per parcel, and I forget the ungodly figure it was for businesses. So, have you crunched the numbers? How much is this going to, when it's implemented, how much money will it raise?
We haven't implemented anything. We're just in the early stage.
I didn't say implemented anything. I said, "When you implement it, how much do you expect it's going to raise?"
So, if these fees are implemented, what is the total with what they've came up with, with what we have down on paper right now? Joe?
Yeah, there's actually several options. One ranges from $652,000 up to 1.3 million.
And that's the one point...
Per year.
Okay, so the highest figure, I assume, is if you implement the full amount that you're, was proposed in the letter I got in my water bill.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Two, if you do it the way I read the letter, where it's going to be put on our property taxes, and it's going to then go through the county, through the state, will 100% of that money come back to the town of St. John, or will we lose some of it to the state and the county?
So, there is no processing fee in that collection for...
So, the answer is yes. 100% will come back to St. John. Thank you. Okay. Has St. John put together any kind of a plan or anything whatsoever as far as what our high priority areas are, what we're going to do with the money besides pay Bob and whoever else the rest of his staff is?
So, this board, I'm sorry, Bob.
I was going to say, there are some projects that have been, priority projects have been put into play, speaking with Bob and the engineers. So, those would be the first prioritized projects that would go underway once the funding is...
It's $2.9 million worth of projects through 2027.
That's what you've got, right, kind of on the planning board now. Okay.
Keep in mind.
And that's just preliminary.
And that's preliminary, okay.
Keep in mind.
And when do you, when are you hoping for whatever the amount of fee turns out to be, because I'm not hopeful there's not going to be one. I see we probably do need to have one. But when do you expect to start collecting these fees?
This would be on the next year's tax bill, not this year.
So...
Yeah, we pretty much passed the deadline.
So, 23 payable for 24.
Right.
So, basically, two years before you start collecting anything here.
But we're going to give this, we're going to go everything methodically so that everyone knows what's going on.
I understand that. I worked for the town for about 40 years. I know how things work. Okay. Okay. And I just want to make one comment, and then I'm going to leave. We, I've been, I was a police officer. I started in '77. I doubt there's anybody in this room that knows the town here as well as I do.
That's where you should stay.
Maybe. Okay.
That's where you should stay.
Well, so I'm going to make a comment. You know, I've seen, you talked about, was it 2008, when you showed the big flood there? I was here for that. I mean, I've seen all this. We don't have a big flooding problem in St. John. If anybody wants to argue with me, tell me where. Because I mean, I remember one time we had a squad car on North Cot went underwater, but that was because the storm sewers were clogged up. And Bob, you know this as well as anybody, when we get the storm sewers are not clogged up with debris, every, basically every subdivision in this town has one, if not two or three retention ponds. And they all lead to some massive storm sewers that end up going down towards Bow Run ditch, which then, as long as that's dredged out, I've seen the water get really high in Bow Run, where it's flooded on both sides of where 231 or 109th Avenue crosses that. But it's never got up over the road. I'm not saying we don't need this. I'm just saying, I don't think we need $18 a month from every parcel in town.
You keep saying 18 a month. You're thinking of $15...
I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir. I stand corrected. 15 a month.
No, $180 a year.
Right.
Now, keep in mind, that has not been approved.
I understand that. Oh, no, I totally understand that, sir. And I'm just making my public comment. I don't think it needs to be that high. You know, in Mariville, they started five bucks a pop. You know, that would be a little more digestible than $18 right off the bat, because five years from now, we all know, that'll go up to 22, and then 25. So, if we have to start, let's start lower, you know, open the floor up to somebody else.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
You're gonna rate two point one million dollars a year, but also you talked about cleaning the storm drains. What if they collapse? What do you do then?
I think, yeah.
How many, how many people live in the town of Mariville versus St. John?
Oh, exactly, a zillion more.
There's thirty-five.
That's, that's the problem. We can't raise the money Mariville raises because we don't have the people.
I understand that, but we don't have the problem Mariville did, where Mariville's located either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bill Keith, 10455 West Ninety-third Avenue, right across from the VFW, the Blue Victorian Farmhouse. So I was born here, and I'm fifty-eight years old, so I guess I'm here for fifty-eight years. No disrespect to Joe, but I still never figured out what you are, what, do you work for the town now?
Do not work for the town. I'm a, I'm a stormwater professional.
So are you just here to just like?
Bill, I can answer that. I asked him to come because he has a lot of history when it comes to the Clean Water Act and all that other stuff.
Okay, okay.
I asked him to come here.
Okay, okay. So you just come to help? Okay, I get it.
He's facilitating the discussion is what he came here for.
Yes.
Bill, let me interrupt you for a second. If you don't mind, this is what we ended up doing last month, okay? Two months ago, actually, we figured that we needed someone out here to explain to the general public what are the issues and what, what, what we're faced with, MS4. So that's why we brought in these individuals to give the, the citizens of the town of St. John an education or get them well-informed about the stormwater. That's why we brought them in.
I, I think the, and, and I, I really appreciate Matt. I've done some work with Mariville before, and I appreciate what Matt's doing here because it sounds like he's here on his own time to try and lend hand to another municipality. So I do appreciate that about Matt. What, what might have been a better about the presentation, and someone brought it up, was, was if we had some specific examples of St. John where there are problems at, it's, it'd be easier to sell us as residents on the need for something like this, if you could point out some problems, because I'm kinda with Rick Conaway that just left, that I've been here my whole life, and the biggest water problem that we always had in town was Hart Street. And some of you guys might have been here where I've spoken at meetings before, but we've got pipes that go under Hart Street. It's, what's it called? St. John Ditch. St. John Ditch, I think, goes into Bull Run, which eventually goes into something else and into the Kanka Key. And guess who cleaned the beaver dams out of St. John Ditch for probably thirty years until my back finally said I shouldn't do it anymore? You know, I, I did with my, and then I had my son doing it, and he's got a bad back. Now, not from cleaning beaver dams, but, you know, we did it because we're residents and we see that it all flooded, so the beavers were coming in. Finally, Steve Kill said, hey, there's a guy in the county, if you just tell us that you saw a beaver dam, we'll send the county out. And then they started doing it. So thank God that the county was doing it. The big problem now is that the two big, whatever your terminology for the corrugated metal pipe?
Culvert.
Yeah, that, that go underneath Hart Street. I think they're clogged, and I, 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 I think they're clogged on the east side of Hart Street. And I know you guys are looking at letting Kenny Drenth come in and put what, what do you call it? Storage lockers down on Hart Street. But it floods, and so I got tired of asking the town, because the town won't do anything because the town's very unorganized. We've been through so many project managers, and it's a rotating leadership in our town, and you guys all know it. We need a mayor, and that's a whole different subject. And then if you don't like him, you can fire him. But anyway, there's this constant flow of people, and then they leave, and we get new guys, and no one knows what the last guy did, and they blame the last guy. So somebody needs some accountability. But anyway, I got tired of asking St. John, so I called the county, talked to Danny Durnell on the plan, or on the county council, and he put me in touch with the county that's in charge of that drainage, the St. John Ditch.
Surveyor's office, probably.
What's that?
By Bill Emerson.
Yeah, Bill Emerson. So I, I was on a conference call with Bill Emerson, Bill Emerson and Danny Durnell, and Bill said, I'm gonna send some guys down there and see if that culvert is clogged, because I was like, I don't wanna get mosquitoes, because I live on the north side of all of that. I don't wanna get mosquitoes. And it was lip service, nobody came out. So, you know, how, you guys are gonna collect all this money and have all this thing, and you're gonna add more layers of government for something. I feel like Rick Conaway made a point being that I don't know that we need all that, we just need a little more common sense, and when the development comes in, and I, and I wanna finish my comments, and I'm, I'm gonna let someone else come up here, but one thing, Matt, is that you didn't sell me on, is that we don't drain into Lake Michigan because we can't, and we can't get Lake Michigan water. I wish we did drain into Lake Michigan, because I'd love to get that beautiful water. And I do agree, it's a precious natural resource. Let's see, my other point, somebody said, it might have been Joe, but somebody said about the farmers, like maybe you said it, Matt, about all the erosion on the farm fields. Our house used to be a farm. I think we know how to keep soil on our own properties, because we don't wanna lose our topsoil. I'm not a farmer, but I'm, as a farmer, I think they know how to keep soil on their property, and, and I appreciate what you're talking about. Most of us as residents drive around and we see all of these socks, these erosion socks everywhere, and they're just strewn, it's, it's the trash of development now. They're everywhere, they're just strewn about, nobody cares about them, they're here, they're there. We don't have any oversight. So if we just tightened up what, what we're already doing and made it better, we wouldn't need to add a whole new layer of government. I'm coming here as a business owner, I'm gonna be very honest with you, I have a small business in town that I started, I, you know, I started out of my garage, and I saved enough money and had to borrow a bunch of money, and I built a steel building in town. And, and what's, what's my fee gonna be as a small business owner? I'm just, you know who works there? Myself, my wife, my son and my brother. What am I gonna get charged because I have a commercial? What, what's my fee gonna be? I'm asking the question.
I don't know, we, we do not know that number at this point. There, there's different options.
Give me a range.
On this one that we have sitting in front of us, Bill, it says.
What's this on the paper?
A hundred twenty, a hundred twenty dollars.
A year?
A month.
A month.
Fourteen forty a year. That's what it was on the paper.
Big, for, for, I don't, I already have a building, I already paid all my fees when I built the building five years ago. I, I paid fifteen thousand dollars, I think, in tap fees, this, this tap into the water to tap into the sewer to, I already paid like a lot of money, which I almost couldn't afford to build the building, you know? So that, that concerns me, you guys. And then I'm gonna try and wrap it up here. Who controls, my daughter lives on Taft Street, my daughter and son, and I helped them, you know, do some fixing up on their home, because they're a young couple, just getting started. But who controls Taft Street from Ninety-third Avenue North?
Taft Street is a state road?
Okay.
That's, that's in that.
That's in that?
They're doing a roundabout at Seventy-third, they're planning to do one there.
Okay.
Where, where'd you say they were at?
Uh, my daughter lives just south of thirty on Taft, between the government complex and thirty.
Okay, yeah.
Is that Mariville, town of Mariville?
Ninety-third is the cutoff for Mariville.
Okay. So you've been, uh.
You can call me anytime, I'll still.
You, you've been in Mariville for twelve years, and, and you guys have the state's first stormwater management office and everything like that, and I appreciate all that. I real, honest, I really do. Every time there's a real significant rain, Taft Street floods across the road in front of the church.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the state. There's a culvert under there.
Okay.
I think the church you're referring to is on the.
It's on the west side, right, right.
There was a pond there that drains, there's a, there's a drive coming in, it drains to the north, and then it crosses Taft right there.
Right.
And that clogs up, we call it state, they jet it out.
Okay.
But it's all overgrown, cattails and all that.
Right.
They don't take care of the right of ways like they should.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not thrilled with the state, especially like along I-65 and things like that, seeing it overgrowth, the frag mighties. But I can tell you too, you talked about, you call somebody, they didn't show up. We answer every single call, like we're here, we answer every single call. Our call volumes, we used to have binders, we tracked every single call. They were like this every year. They're sitting in my office if you wanna come look at them. Now our binders are like next to nothing, because we've addressed old issues. People have been calling the town forever that, you know.
Bill Emerson didn't call me back, and he said he was going to, so.
And then again, I can't speak for Bill, usually very responsive, but when you have a stormwater utility, you're, you're bound to, to help out your residents. I'm not sure if you're tied to a regulated drain or anything like that, because that's what the surveyor's office is supposed to be addressing and maintaining of the Lake County regulated drain.
Excuse me, no, no disrespect to anybody, but can we just focus on, on St. John?
So thank you, guys.
Matt would be happy to talk to you.
Thank you for letting me make my comments.
Just so you know, we, we haven't made any decision on any of the rates that are going. That's why we.
Thank you, guys, and honestly, thank you, Matt, for all your input.
Thank you for your questions.
Good evening, Board and Director of Public Works and Village Manager. My name is John Schaefer. I live at 14290 West Ninety-fourth Avenue. I have a couple of questions for the Board, and first off, is there anybody here from Sandler and Dalton who did the?
Yes.
Great, great. Because some of these you may be able to answer. One is, in the rate study, and I looked at, looked it up, we're talking fifteen dollars per month for a hundred and eighty dollars. But in the rate study, you had, I think your high range was ten dollars a month.
For?
Residential.
Residential, correct. Ten dollars.
Do we know what the difference is, or why the extra five dollars per month? And your, your dollar numbers were based off of the ten dollars, right? The, all the way to, I think, the one point two, or what it was under option D?
May I see what you have in front of you?
Uh. Right. I think your max for residential was ten.
Yes, so that's what I have.
And that's based off of these.
So.
That may just be a correction, that might have been a typo or something in your, when you sent the letter out. The other question is, does St. John, the town of St. John, plan on creating a separate department for stormwater, or will it just be part of Public Works? You know, with this money that's being generated.
I think what he's asking is it's gonna be its own entity, the same way Mariville is, or is it gonna fall under the direction of?
No, I'm sure just much like Mariville did, they started off as a, as a, as a combined effort within the department for Public Works, and then kinda branched off. I don't know if that's what we're looking to do.
So originally here with this money, you're not looking to start a separate department?
We can't mingle.
That's not the intention of it.
Well, no, I, I'm just asking to see how this money is gonna be spent, if you're gonna create a new department, or at least right now, just with the funding that you're anticipating.
Right, we're not looking at adding additional personnel or, or.
Right.
Buying a, you know, sewer vac or anything.
Uh, the other.
That's the truth.
The other question I have is, do you know, will the Stormwater Board rewrite the ordinance that you currently have?
Yes, we are looking into rewriting our ordinances. That, that's one of the lot of things that we need to do, yes.
To establish a rate to put into the new ordinance.
Well, I don't, I'm not talking about just a rate, I'm talking about the whole ordinance.
Ordinance, fourteen thirty-two, yes, absolutely.
Because, because one of my questions that I looked at in the ordinance was, which I was surprised, and, you know, this was probably done years ago, and I don't know if you can change it now, but typically in development, when you create detention or retain, detention or retention, the responsibility is still up to the developer to maintain that throughout the years. Now, whether it's turned over to an HOA or whatever, so the town is not liable for that. The town is liable to make sure it's maintained, and to write the homeowners association or the developer to make sure that that is maintained, because I think eventually with more and more subdivisions going in, these rates to maintain these detention ponds and retention ponds is gonna be very, very expensive in the future. So I think the ordinance may need to be rewritten.
Yeah, in fact, we talked about that at one of the Planning Commission meetings, I brought that up, the very same thing, is what happens if the homeowners association goes defunct? Who's responsible for maintaining it? And then it's gonna become the town's problem at that point. So that's, that is something that we, we are definitely gonna be taking a look at, is what's, what's our legal position in terms of, you know, can we enforce a separate fee on the subdivision if they're not paying a homeowners association, which is supposed to go to maintain those, those properties? Is that something that the town can then take and then, you know, take care of those and maintain those?
Right.
But I don't know if that's even legal to do. That's, that's one of the things we have legal looking at.
Okay. And then I think in the study, it referred to, I think it was three or four projects you wanna do with this money. I've not heard anything of what these projects are. You know, are there?
Well, we have a, we have a list of several projects, but there's really, it's all based off funding, so once we.
I know, I understand it, but, but what are the projects? I mean, I, I look at it and say, you know what? There's a project, but what is, is that project to put new storm sewer down Ninety-third Street? Is it to do?
Oh, I have no problems telling you.
But, and that's, that's all I'm asking.
I will share them all with you. Ray, Ray's Villa, Kalos Edition, subdivision Oakwood Drives, North and South Oakwood off Patterson, and East and West Oakwood. You have 12116 Ninety-Fifth Drainage Replacement Improvements. That's a cost estimate of forty-nine thousand. The first one I told you is a cost estimate of around seven hundred and some thousand. The third one is Spring Lake Road Drainage Improvements. Another one is Osage Drive, which is here in Lake. That culvert replacement is up to a hundred thousand dollars. 13281 Lantern Drive, the low area, ninety-five thousand. And that's just the start. I mean, we just started diving into these projects, so we stopped there until we figured out what's our next step.
And I think that's a good thing. I mean, we all know.
There's no reason to have a list of a hundred projects.
No, but at least, at least it lets the residents know where this money's going, because there are these projects, and a project involves replacing storm sewer because it's collapsed, or it's not adequate anymore. You know, at least, I didn't see any, any of that in the report that I read, you know, to kinda let people know where this money's going. It just says projects.
Right.
You know, and that could be anything. The other question I have is, will, will this funding be sent up as a enterprise fund? And what I mean by enterprise fund is, just like you have a water fund or whatever, that money can only be used for stormwater improvements and nothing else. It's not, it's not put into the general fund and can be tapped in. It's strictly...
It's a restricted fund.
Right, restricted fund, enterprise-type fund.
It's going to be like the road impact fee, going to be contained within an account, and that money is for that purpose only.
And then the last question I have is, does the Town Council end up making the final decision on this, or is it the Water Board that makes the final decision on whether we go into this and what that rate is? And, you know, I'm not sure how that is acted.
It'll basically be a recommendation that we provide to the council, and the council will actually vote.
Vote yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for your question.
Let me clarify something, just...
Good question.
Just for you and the citizens, the original ordinance on first reading had a number of $10 in it, okay? So you may have seen that from months back. Under my recommendation, I said to the council, don't you think that in order to advise the citizens, instead of starting at $10, and then the numbers in the budget showed that we would fall short by anywhere up to, let's say, $90,000 to $100,000 the first year in operation, okay? In other words, it would cost us 90 or 100 grand more to actually get the program going, and get the code enforcement hired, and so on and so forth. Therefore, I recommended that instead of us putting in $10, and then next year going, well, jeez, we don't have enough money, we better make it 11. So then we're going to raise the citizens' rate another dollar. And then the next year, it'll be reevaluated, and it'll be another dollar. So instead of driving the citizens crazy every, every year, having these public hearings and discussing it with the citizens, what if we passed the fee, and the 15 was just the maximum? You're looking from 10 to 15, but there's been no decision made. So therefore, looking at the budget requirements, and what Bob has for projects, and so on and so forth, and the code enforcement officer, which will be an eight-hour per job, 40-hour a week job, for somebody to go out and they inspect properties, they inspect buildings, they inspect developments and subdivisions, that'll be their full-time job, inspecting stormwater management, implementation. Therefore, once we arrive at a solid budget, and Cender Dalton is here, and they're providing the numbers, based on the estimates for going out three to five years, they're going to say, it's going to cost you this much, and then it's going to cost you this much, and this. They're going to do it, and based on that is how we should set the fees. And if you, as an individual, don't feel that you want to have your fee raised every year by a dollar, or whatever, $2, whatever's necessary to cover the cost, then, you know, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. But I think if the money, as we just said, it's going to be contained in a fund for that purpose only, you can't spend it, can't put it in a general fund, it'll sit there. So if at the first year, we collect $100,000 more than we use, more than we spend, that money will still sit in that fund, and next year, that 100 grand will be spent for the projects going forward. And that will just go from year to year. And if there's any surplus, or any collection over and above what it costs us to run the program, it'll be sitting there for next year to start spending accordingly. And hopefully, just like Maryville has done, we will start running with surplus, and then we start getting grants that will put more money, hopefully, in the fund.
Yeah, my question was, is that there were just two different rates. One had the study that was done, and based on what the project expenses were, and then the letter that came out had another fee, and I was just trying to...
That's why I tried to explain to you. The low is 10, the high is 15. And anywhere in between, these gentlemen will give us their recommendations. We don't make that decision. They will recommend whatever they vote on.
In fact, Brian, if I can just kind of correct that a little bit, you said the low is 10. Actually, they could actually recommend a lower rate.
Right.
Oh, no, that's fine.
The maximum was the 15, and that's why they wanted to make sure that, you know, it was advertised at the highest.
That's why I originally said that. The $15 was to make sure...
Actually, to be correct, the lowest in the study was $5.
Oh, okay.
And the highest was 10.
You're correct.
Then you're in turn saying that you increased it to, or looking to, looking to make a recommendation of 15.
So that everybody wouldn't be shocked if...
The recommendation is not 15. That was the amount that was advertised, at the highest.
Thank you very much. Kurt Cook, my wife Joyce and I reside at 8245 Meadow Lane. That's in the Golden Pond subdivision, right behind Livio's, behind Smoothie King. Probably the best-kept secret in St. John. We don't want a lot of people to know we're there. First of all, I want to thank, thank you for allowing us to come here and speak. And having been on the other side, I was building Commissioner in Hammond for 10 years. Prior to retiring, I understand you have a pretty thankless job. Not too many people come up and tell you, thank you, but I do. I appreciate what you're doing. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I appreciate it. Our subdivision, like this gentleman here, does not contribute to the stormwater damage. Now, I fully well realize that every street, every road, every park, every government building, every stream is all publicly owned property, and we should all share equally in what needs to be done to protect that property. But I do think that the people who, who contribute to the problem more should be assessed a higher fee than people who do not contribute to the problem. So I think that in your studies, when you do it, look at his property, look at our property, there's other subdivisions, St. John, that don't do it. Something you should also consider is, our pond, where all of our stormwater drains into, as well as for the shopping plaza next to us, that Danny Myers owns, is undergoing a renovation program because of the erosion, because of stormwater problems, because of the problems that this gentleman talked about over here. And we embarked on a project over five years of spending over $90,000 to preserve our pond, and to keep our pond beautiful, and to, I like the three-pound bass I cast out of there. I want to be able to do it in a few more years. But if we're spending $90,000 because of stormwater problems, and then you want to assess us more money because of stormwater problems, this doesn't seem right. If we're paying those additional fees, are you going to help our stormwater problem? Is that something that the, the Board would recommend, or could even consider? Or if you're not going to help us solve our problems, because we didn't come and ask for it, we just said, every resident's got to kick in $2,000 over the next five years, and we'll take care of their problems ourself. But then, if we're taking care of our own stormwater problems ourself, without asking the Board to help us, shouldn't the Board consider lowering the fees of the people who aren't contributing to the problem? Now, I fully understand that nobody likes to pay taxes. But tax money well-spent benefits us all, and makes all of our property values higher. So whatever you do, I encourage you to take your time doing it. If you don't get it done by next year, and by the way, I'd rather pay 15 now and not worry about it forever. I'd actually rather not pay anything now, but if I have to pay, let's get it done and be over with it.
But we all agree, we leave the town as well. So I'm impacted just like you.
But what I've seen in the, in the 10 years I worked for city government, is sometimes we rush into things. I've got to get this done in '23 payable '24. And no, you don't. I understand, because I went through it in Hammond, where we lived for more years than I care to remember, we got hit with huge fees, and, you know, all the citizens are paying for it. So I understand that there is an urgency to what you're doing. But the urgency isn't so great that you can't take the time to do it right, to make sure that it's fair to everybody, whether they're contributing to the problem or not contributing to the problem. It takes the time to do it right, and I encourage you to do that. Please do not rush through it. Please take the time to do it right, and make a decision that benefits all of us in St. John. And thank you for your time.
Great points, thank you.
Hi, Mark Rassvik, 8830 Mallard Lane. I'm curious, I'd like to get your guys' feedback. What do you guys do in cases where anybody is obstructing the flow or the drainage going into a storm drain? Currently, what I'm dealing with right now is, I have somebody who lives behind me, and what they've done is, they've built this enormous landscape in front of the stormwater drain, and for five years now, they've been draining their pool into my property, accessing the storm drain. It floods my backyard, it's cost me money out of my pocket, it's cost time with my family, and I'm getting tired of paying to maintain the easement on my property, and I'm getting tired of telling my children that they cannot play in their backyard because they have chosen to drain their pool into my property. So what do you guys do if somebody has obstructed the swelling going into the storm drain?
So, I mean, this, obviously, this is a new board to where, this is the first time we're hearing of this. Have you contacted the building department, or everything else? Go ahead.
I have.
If you wouldn't just call Public Works?
Yep.
And give them your name, number. They'll do a case sheet, and I'll come out and I'll inspect it, and we can, we can go from there.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
In other words, you have to advise the town, you've got a problem, and now...
I have. I don't know who you reached out to. I haven't seen anything yet, so...
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, call the office, and they'll write up a case sheet, and I'll try and get out there sometime this week, actually.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, my name is Steve Winarski. I live at 8843 Mallard Lane. I got a question for you guys. You want to sit here and ask me for another $180 a year, then I'm already paying 40 for this Kuyamet River thing, or whatever, okay? I live in North Point, 91st Avenue and Drake is cleaned up by the town, okay? This subdivision was put in by Martech, okay? So the, the second half, when everything hit to crap, 86th Avenue and Mallard, there's cattails, they don't ever cut the public walk or nothing. Othoff's responsible for it. Why is that, that Othoff has got to do with it? Is this a part of the Town Council? What, what, what is going on here? I don't understand this. I feel like a freaking moron, that how come one side, you got a retention pond the town takes care of, and down at the end of the street, nobody takes care of it? I mean, I'm glad I don't live next door to it, because, dude, when you cut the, I mean, I got pictures of it. The grass is this tall, there's cattails. I mean, when I moved in there 15 years ago, I could take my kids down the street to go sledding down there. And I think it's a shame, and now you guys want to sit here and talk to me about drainage? And, and want to sit here and ask me for 180 bucks a year? I think this is ridiculous. You know, I mean, if you guys, maybe you guys need a town engineer over here or something to find out and look at these specs, or look at the elevations and stuff, before you approve this stuff. I'm just aggravated, because you know why? We keep flooding this area with homes and everything else, and saying, oh, yeah, it's beautiful. What are you guys thinking about? You think about tax dollars? Why don't we think about this stuff ahead of time? Okay? And then, you know, here we hire a guy here from out of state to go ahead and run the Town Council. I'm a little aggravated with this, okay? I was born and raised here in Indiana. I moved here to St. John 15 years ago. I am proud to be a Hoosier, and I'm upset that I got to sit here and listen to this crap, that you want more money out of me, after you raised my taxes and everything else, and then now you want more money for this stormwater control? Why don't somebody get their head out of their rectum and figure out what the hell's going on before we start putting these... Don't look at him, look at me. I'm talking to you. Look at me, because you know why? We need a town engineer, or somebody over here, to decide what the hell is going on here, before we decide to put these subdivisions in. Then you wouldn't have to sit here and beg me for money. Same thing like the schools.
Sure, can we just get into it?
Same thing with the schools. No, I, I...
A level that we can not be upset about.
I, I know, but listen to me, it's just like the schools, okay? Let's keep building these subdivisions, and we're not going to worry about schools, then you're going to come hit us with a random, oh, hey, we need more tax money for the schools. I'm tired of this. You understand? Somebody needs to get their crap together, enough.
May I, thank you very much for your comments. At the beginning of this meeting, we started to talk exactly what the MS4 was all about, and actually addresses all the issues that you're talking about. But you know what? You came in a little late, and it's all right. But if you look at that, we should have it on display on the video, this presentation, and it will help, because part of the problem has been going on for many years in this town. I've been here for 30-some years, okay?
I understand.
And the problem has occurred that we haven't addressed this, and development has come up with doing things, but this is not our area. The Planning Division is part of it. Then you have the town that you could talk to about.
Somebody needs to start thinking about this stuff, not wait till last minute and then say, hey, boom, we got to hit your pocketbook. If you're looking for 180 bucks a year, how many residents we have in this town? So what kind of money are we talking about? Do you understand what I'm saying? That's my whole point.
Okay, one of the things that we did in this whole thing here, the MS4, was actually pinpoint the problem, one. Second, identify the causes. And third, set the objectives that must and the wants. The must and the wants, the needs, in other words, the difference between the want and the need. And then the fourth, formulate alternatives, and that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get ideas to formulate alternatives, and then evaluate the alternatives against the objectives. And that's what everyone is here trying to do.
I understand that.
So we are following your pattern.
I understand it, but here, I got a problem with this. How come you guys can take care of one detention pond down the street, and the other one is not?
We just started this here. MS4 has just started here. This board has just started.
I, I understand, but you know, it aggravates me, because it seems to me like there's a member in the Town Council that is related to them, and I, whatever, somehow, I don't care, but I'm sick and tired of the political crap that goes on here, okay? If you guys could take care of one down the road, why can't you take care of the other one? It's ridiculous.
And, and everyone's pretty much on board, you know, with being aggravated with everything that's going on. That's what we volunteered our time to do. Hold on.
That's right.
Let's take care of the other one, gentlemen, that's what I'm asking.
This is, this is what we're doing. We're getting everything together, including your issue, now that I have your address and everything else, and we will check it out, and...
I totally understand, and I'm not trying to sit here and knock anybody, you know, but I don't want to sit here and listen to somebody run his yapper about something. Hey, I pay taxes here, dude, just like you, you, you and you, okay? Maybe he don't live here, I don't know, but, but what I'm saying is, hey, I pay taxes here, why is it one side gets done, the other side don't?
And that's, and that's...
And that's horrible. I mean, even on the public deal, from the sidewalk to the curb, it don't even get cut by the town. That's a disgrace. For God's sakes, if you guys are trying to get people in here, take care of it. And if, if it ain't your problem, then get on the developer and have him do it.
Now that we know that's...
We got a code enforcement, that's what he said, he got a code enforcement, right? Jeez, I, I don't know. Where's your code enforcement at? Sleeping? I, I don't know, we pay, we pay a person for code enforcement, correct?
Part-time.
Part-time, oh, okay, part-time, part-time code enforcement. You know, maybe if we got on them to cut the grass, and cut all these vacant lots and all that crap, maybe you guys wouldn't have to sit here and keep hitting us for money for stuff. Keep that in mind, brother.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
The Blocker 10591, Juniper Lane. At this point, I'm not in favor of the $16, or the $15 monthly fee, or the $180. I saw if I live in the Gates subdivision, I'm paying $600 to the association to maintain our open space and detention areas and so forth like that, and adding another $180 a year to pay for somebody else's detention area. I don't see that really fair. Also, I think a lot of our issues comes with the developers and the contractors. I think you need, maybe look at, if you're going to issue a stormwater permit to a builder, charge him $500 for the stormwater permit. Make sure then that he complies with all the regulations for that permit. Same thing for the developer. Charge him, you know, based on his acreage, you know, you're going to have five units per acre, fine, charge whatever five houses would be per acre, and that's going to be his fee. And then make sure that he implement his plans. I mean, you walk these subdivisions, and, you know, the streets are all full of mud, every time, every time, especially after a rain, or he gets done grading. You talk about buying a jet vac. My question is, how many times has the town made the developer clean out a storm sewer before the town took it over? Probably none, because they probably never even looked at it. I think, you know, a lot of it gets into getting back on these developers, and having them do an improvement that's substantial to the town's needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Last one, I think. I think I stated my name already, Ted Nozel, 12629 Laramore Drive. I'm just worried about, the town came in, and there's a creek that runs between Laramore Pond and the old Kaz Boney property that the shillings purchased. So the town came in and dug that out without even notifying any of the residents. I just want to make sure that when you plan something, you do it right, because that's actually a natural flowage, and Army Corps Engineers is supposed to be involved in that if you train it. And I had a drain pipe going down there, and the town tore it up, and I don't even know if it's in there, because I, to alleviate the problem at my house, I hand dug in about 280 feet of corrugated four-inch tile, and put it all the way to the creek, because all the water coming off the street. And then I had a problem with my neighbor, and he called the town, and the town said it was good, because I was getting rid of the runoff. But I understand that the town, basically what he's saying, because of EPA, the State of Indiana, the federal government, because of Clean Water Act, the town is basically up a creek without a paddle, because you got to adhere to all these new things. I understand all this stuff. And then I have two parcels of property, because my house sits on three-quarters of an acre, and I got a quarter acre, you're going to charge me two fees? And it's a vacant lot. And, you know, like, everybody's always saying about, you know, you want to, I understand it's got to be done, and you got to tax me, but I have three easements on my property, because I have a corner lot, I pay higher taxes, and I think it's 13 to 17-foot easements. And I think it's thirteen to seventeen foot of easement, I maintain that, pick up all the leaves, uh, cut the grass. I says, uh, so, do I start charging the town? Because that's the town's property, I don't own it. Do I start charging the town fif- fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a year to maintain it? I mean, it's just, it's crazy, you know? And I, you know, I, I don't want to sit, you know, I don't mind doing it, but then the thing is, is that when it comes push to shove. And it's crazy, I just, you know, I, I just want to make sure. Plus, they gotta start making more green space in the town of Saint John, because when I moved here, there was five thousand residents, there was farm fields everywhere, and we never have a problem. Now we got all these subdivisions, you got no green space. And a perfect place to, uh, like he was saying, I know you got responsibility of lakes, but between White Oak, Ninety-third, One Hundred and First, and all the way up to the S-curve would have been a beautiful place to have a lake built. Then you would have had no problems with that, but it's all about tax money. And I understand that. And the property to the south, the twenty-two acres of Cas Bonis, that'd be a perfect place for a park. But, I don't think the shillings are gonna donate it, because they probably paid high dollar for it. So, and I know they build a good house, and, you know, they've done a lot of good stuff for the community, but it's just, before you leap, you should think about where you're leaping into. You know, I always told my kids, if somebody's jumping off the, the house, just because they did it, are you gonna do it too? I mean, you got a lot of problems. You got police department, you need more p- police. You got roads that need to be wi- widened. We got one four-lane highway that comes through Saint John, and we got all these residents. How would you ever get out of here? And, uh, I know he was talking about the collapse of the dire, uh, that culvert going on Hart Street. It was, I'm three minutes from my house. It took me forty-five minutes to get home. Because of one thing. And see, everybody wants to come out here, because the taxes are cheaper and everything, but nobody thinks about what they're doing. And that's what I was telling you about deaf ears. They don't want to listen to me before, you know, and, and, uh, everything is, and it shouldn't be tied that way. It should be, when you're in government, your residents should come first. Not, not the self-interest and everything else, because we're the ones that pay all the taxes. And, and, and everybody's lost sight of that in government. And that's all I gotta say, and, uh, have a good day, and just let me know if you're gonna do anything to my property, because, um, I just, I just would like to be out there when you do it, or if you guys come out there. I don't really have a problem, because Hilltop is the highest elevation in Saint John. So everything runs away from my house. So, but, all right, have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Is there any other questions, comments?
I have a couple. Uh, Matt, how many, uh, how many present employees do you have? Right now?
I've got four employees.
Four?
We contract out the larger jobs, just so you know. Yeah, it's one of those things where, uh, we've got, we've got a lot done over the years. I, I sympathize with your account about the development and the open space. Um, one of the things we did is implemented open space ordinance, requiring the developer to set aside ten percent of all of the property towards open space. Could be parks, could be a forest preserve, something like that. Having those amenities is good for the residents, but also good for stormwater.
I think, uh, and, and, and when we start getting our plans together, obviously you're gonna be the one we call, you know, for any ideas or anything else that you guys implemented that's been successful. Uh, and when you started, it was four right off, right off the bat, or did you use the Public Works employees?
Um, when I first got in, what happened was, initially they kind of were kind of housed in Public Works. When they hired me, we created a separate utility completely, physically. It was on paper, and I think that was important, because then we have a separate fund, and got accountability, you know? So you know what our board meetings, everything that we have, that our board proves everything, and the council proves the accounts payable. And it, it, it's just everything up our budgets, everything, our, we have two funds, we have an operational fund and a construction fund. So we account for every penny. And I think that's important to keep it separate. Uh, you might have to wean off, start off there and then wean off, but we took a lot off the Public Works plate. All the jet packing, all, all the, uh, infrastructure replacement, all the flooding laws, all that stuff kicked us.
So, that, uh, now that was my next question, the equipment, did you just take that with you from Public Works, or did you buy new?
Yes, we purchased new from, and we, we bonded one time, and, uh, that bond's gonna be paid out in like four, five years. Um, we have a bond since.
So, how many, uh, how many parcels would you say Maryville has?
Uh, we've got about twelve-
Taxable parcels.
About thirteen thousand parcels.
And then, um, Joe, where, where the town's plan is to have, uh, this be its own board, or just an advisory board, and then you guys make the decision?
The way that, oh, sorry. The way that the, the ordinance was, as it is, it would be an advisory board making recommendations to the town council.
And that is, is that what you guys have?
The board is, is created by state law.
Mm-hmm.
They're calling, if, if you, with your board, you should have an attorney or someone-
That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
You know, advise you legally. Uh, your financial advisor to advise you financially, as you go along, because again, it's a lot about accountability. Uh, the guy mentioned about having two parcels, you can combine your parcels in at one fee.
Right.
There's nothing against that.
Right.
It's kind of a loophole.
Right.
So, a- again, you guys, you guys make your own process, procedure, everything else?
Yes.
And then, you're still an advisory board? Or is there a difference between having just an advisory board as this one is set up as? As to having your own separate department?
Um, you know, you, you, you form a utility by ordinance, right? So you, you are a, a body of the town. So ultimately, the council has say-so on that, but you're, you're bound by the town codes and rules and regulations, as well as state codes, rules and regulations, and the federal government rules and regulations in terms of the environmental aspects. Again, I, I would stress accountability, I would stress transparency, and I would make sure that, um, you prioritize your projects accordingly. And again, at, at first, you're not gonna have a big study until you probably pay for a big study to show where you spent a dollar. So it's good that you have a starter list to go by, but ultimately, you want to go to the town and see what the needs are and what the engineers' estimates are. And that's where you say, okay, well, we have the bond for this, we gotta go for a big grant, and we can match it at twenty, or whatever you gotta do to make that project happen.
And Joe, Art, you, Joe, uh, on this, uh, agriculture slash bacon, are we just co- counting anything that one time that was farm fields that's just sitting there waiting to be built on? Or do we have different separate numbers for each, to where if it is a development coming up, that maybe they have a different fee from the guy who's still planting corn out there?
I, I would assume, and I'm gonna defer this to, um, Daniel, but I would, I would assume that that's, that's, you're undeveloped.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree. It's whatever it currently is listed as, property record, um, code-wise on the property record cards in the county. Whatever.
Is that something that's available, that you guys can get to us to let us know?
If you have specific properties, sure.
Yeah, well.
You have the key numbers in all the properties there.
Yeah, there's, there's ten thousand one hundred forty-three on there.
Yes.
So as, as compared to, to Maryville, they had, you said fifteen, or thirteen thousand? We've got-
Fee structure, we do a by land use code plus fee.
Yeah, and that's basically kind of what we were looking at, structuring it the same way.
So we, we need an attorney here in order for us to actually be a little bit more transparent and-
You can cut that some line for sure.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
So all this thing is actually, it's a learning process that we're trying to make sure we get all our ducks in a row. So we do need an attorney in this group here, so they could help us, you know, stay in line. And if we promote something or-
I don't see that being a bad idea. I'm kidding. I can email a couple, and then if you have any, we can set up for the next time we have a meeting.
Yeah, I think in our workshop, we could probably try to figure out who we could get as an attorney for the MS four in, in the town of Saint John, and then, uh, start to work forward then. This is part of the whole process. I really, uh, I'm really enjoying listening to everyone, but it doesn't go in deaf ears, but unfortunate part is that we're not the town, but we're also trying to develop this stormwater to meet the guidelines of the federal and state, uh, so that we're all in compliance. And it'll help us out on the development side, help out all across the board.
So, were our plans not to hire anyone else? Um, that, I think that was said earlier.
Right now, my salary does not come out of, it comes out of-
Public Works or water sewer.
It comes out of water, motor vehicle, sanitary wastewater.
So, right now, a- as far as you, you know, what you're doing, Bob, you're, you're the only one doing it?
Yes.
So you're our MS four liaison worker, everything else.
And public improvements in water, yes, yes.
I mean, and, and there's no, no talks of separating and giving you some help, because, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're about to charge people-
Right now, we have zero budget for it.
I don't want to hear that.
No, I'm just saying.
I, I get it, but that, that's just, that's crazy.
We started off spotting Public Works.
Yeah, and that's-
And, and we, we- Right, right, and we did send a, a gentleman-
How much time are we spending on MS four stuff per week?
As much as I possibly-
I get that. I mean, could you give me a rough estimate?
I would say-
And how many guys?
At least, well, I do have the part-time code enforcement too, that is out, and doing inspections as well.
And that part-time code enforcement is only doing that, or are they also doing?
No, she's doing every-
Roofs and everything else.
Every, every complaint, yes. So I would say I, I probably spend at least, safe number would be thirty hours, thirty hours.
That, that's amongst his other duties though, too, so-
Yes.
I, I'm gonna say it's part-time code enforcement, that's ridiculous.
And-
Why don't you get somebody full-time, and then you don't have to sit here and worry about all this other crap? And when she writes citations for this or that, that'll bring this town some money.
It's hard, it's, it's in this year's budget.
I, I think-
This whole thing, to me, is what I'm saying, I'm thinking this whole thing is for this Riverwalk thing, correct?
No.
It's bullshit.
No. Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Thank you. No.
You can tell me that, but I'm telling you right now.
So, okay.
We've got both creeks over there, there ain't no river over there.
So, so we're-
Who's got this thing conjured up in their head?
Okay, is there, is there any more questions or comments from?
I'm just telling you, I, I voice my opinion.
And, and we thank you.
Listen, that's what we're here for.
So that's it.
And that's why, that's why we have it o- open right now. So you can let us know what you're thinking, so we can make a better decision on what we have to do.
I just think this is bullshit, that you guys are wanting to sit here and ask us for a hundred eighty dollars for this.
Just, just so you know, we haven't, we haven't put anything on there, Steve.
I don't-
And we're, and we're looking into it.
I, I don't, I don't agree with it.
Right, okay, and we're working on it, bud.
Let's, let's, let's keep moving.
I just, I just wanted to ask one question.
Mm-hmm.
Just listening to everything, I mean, it sounds like he needs help.
Hmm, yes.
It's, you know, we, we've been in this situation before where we had one person, like, here ninety hours a week. He's, I'd see his truck out here until nine o'clock at night, almost every night. I would be interested to hear from Matt, you know, maybe this is down the road, or, or, uh, uh, Joe, sorry. Um, like, what are the implications of us just going ahead and figuring out, like, all the projects that need to be done? And what do we need to raise to do those projects? Or is this something that's being mandated by the state and the Fed, where we have to develop this thing? So in other words, can we not do it on our own, where we really need to create this department for regulatory reasons?
So, so the board hat, and, um, you, you want to jump in? I mean, I can do it, either way.
Long story short, back in two thousand and three is when Rule Five, or Five came, came, Thirteen came in, and now-
It was on the board.
Right, and now we, right, through the state, now that we're, the EPA, and you guys already heard all that, the EPA, and then IDEM, you know, governs us. We are out of compliance, we need to update our ordinances, we need to update our mapping, we need to update a lot of stuff. And then we also need to concentrate on inspections on these new developers and these new builders, because there's a lot they're getting away with. Um, we, we need boots on the ground, there's a lot of stuff that we need to do, and we need to do now, because we did get audited, and it's not looking good if we don't do anything. So this is what we're trying to do, is go, in the future, doing things correctly now. Things were not done correctly back then, now we are doing things correctly.
Bob, who audited you?
Uh.
IDEM?
Yeah, IDEM did.
So the Department of Environmental Management audits the town regularly to say, are you meeting the federal guideline? And are you meeting the state permit? And, and, and when they're not, you know, we're talking about inspection, MS four is responsible through the new permit that, that came out in December twelfth, for a whole bunch of new stuff that wasn't in Rule Thirteen.
Right.
Right, so, so, so there's, there's actually five minimum control measures that you can do six, that Bob is responsible for, and he has it for it right now. But we, we've covered a lot of those that are causing issues. The, the ponds, and maintenance of the ponds, and what's happening there, construction inspection, sand review.
Some of that's gotta go back here.
All rolled together, so.
And, and engineers to, to, yeah, look through these plans, yes, right.
Same thing.
Right.
What about the narrative, control erosion or anything?
And I'm actually gonna look into that pond, because I, I think you're incorrect about Al Tauf owning it, I think the town is supposed to maintain that. So I'll, I will look into that.
Somebody needs to look in that, because I'm upset.
I will, I will, I can tell.
If I didn't extort it, I'd really be happy, okay?
Yes, I got your address written down, and I'm gonna check it out. You're talking about the northeast corner, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
We got it, Bob. Thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, so back to your, that, those were the questions that I was asking, uh, kinda to what you were saying there, Bill. I mean, this is a long time coming, it, it's been passed from year to year to year.
From person to person to person.
And we're sitting here now trying to stuff five pounds into one pound bag. Uh, so, we're going to, uh, take everything into consideration of what everyone says, their, not just their feelings, but, you know, the, the valid points that they brought up. Uh, and that was my question with, what kind of help is this guy gonna get? Because if we are here to charge you, and just off this, and it's just for conversation sake, you know, fourteen forty every year, and it's the same guy doing it, then what's the point, you know? So, uh-
I think that's what I'm afraid of, is that I get another tax and I see no benefit of it. And, and I still get, we still get flooding out here, and we still get flooding there. But if, if, if it's implemented, and we, and the residents start seeing the benefit of that, like Maryville, all the nice acres and the green space, then it's a little more palatable.
Right, and I'm, I'm gonna take a trip out to, to Maryville and see what Matt has going on, out there, uh, to give us a better idea of what, what we need, you know? Uh, and I'm gonna ask Joe to find somewhere to, you know, hire this guy some help. Uh, that way it's, you know, we, we, we hit the ground running, as, as opposed to just, you know, a part-timer. And then, that's it. So we're on it, we're on top of it. Uh, between the three of us, I mean, I can tell you Bob's background in it, you know, Joe's, and, and myself, uh, as a Public Works Director somewhere else, that we're, we're, we have the knowledge for it, we're just gonna put everything into, into a process and, and start getting it done, where it's not gonna affect everyone financially, you know, through the roof. And we're not just gonna charge, uh, the highest amount just so we can start plopping money into account. We're gonna have a plan going forward, and that's how we're gonna do it. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
I, I'm not trying to be a smartass.
No, no one's taking it like that, you're, you're just passionate.
What I'm saying is, if we got a code enforcement, or you got a building and planning commission, or whatever, when these subdivisions are laying in place, they need to make sure that, you know, they've got all their stuff in a place too, you know what I mean?
And, and with, with the creation of this board, we're gonna-
I'm just saying, if you're already paying them for payroll, and I know we got a code enforcement, which is part-time, but you know what? Somebody needs to take care of this stuff. We don't need to sit here and pay additional people to do something else that somebody else is already getting paid to do.
And, and that's what we're looking into, and we're gonna try to get the best process out of it.
I'm sorry.
No, you ain't gotta apologize, man.
It's fine.
You're good.
Is there any other comments?
Comments or questions?
All right, I, I'd like to thank, oh, yes, sir.
Just one more comment. Again, we're talking about all these projects that need to be done, and Land Commission just had a, uh, project come before them, the, uh, storage units on Hart Street. And it's a twelve-acre site, and I was at the meeting and asked, you know, what improvements he's gonna be doing to Hart Street. Well, I find out nothing, he's only put a sidewalk in along Joel yet, and, um, a fire hydrant inside their fenced area. That's the only thing he's doing, and yet Hart Street floods, so why not make this guy fix the flooding problem?
Right.
But he doesn't.
Doug, one of the questions I brought up during that meeting specifically was that there is no compensatory storage. Under the town's ordinances, there is no requirement for that. However, there is under Lake County, which is what we have to defer to. Under that, there, they have to, um, comply with that, and I, I'm sorry to mean to, I, I know it was kind of your thunder, so if you want to talk-
Yeah, just to clarify, Hart Street's in a-
Yeah, just to clarify, Hart Street's in a floodplain and floodway. It's actually in the floodway, Doug. And it will continue to flood because it's under the BFE.
So, they can't raise, raise the roadway?
Can't.
With the prophesies, culverts?
Then that would be filling in the floodplain and you'd have to comp that somewhere else, so.
And the feds have to.
So, they, they did approve that?
Yeah, so what?
No, no, not so what.
They've got to add, they've got to add the compensatory.
Developer will pay for it.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
The developer would pay for it.
The developer would pay for what?
The, but getting a, a federal permit for it? He wants to improve it.
In three to five years?
Then it gets, then it gets built in three to five years. I mean, I, I see these, these developers getting away with doing nothing. Otherwise, collect some money for us, say, hey, we're going to put it towards this project. But again, no curb, no, no sidewalks, nothing. I'm sorry. Thanks.
No, it's not like you ain't got to apologize. A lot of people in town feel the same way.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank, uh, Matt Lake and, and Joe Moore for taking their time tonight to come out and, and speak to everyone and, and I appreciate everybody coming forth with their, their questions and comments. Oh. Um, we did have, thanks, Bill. Uh, we had a couple of, uh, emailed, uh, emails that came in with regard to some comments, uh, for this meeting tonight. So, I'll just read them into record. Um, this is from Sharon Malas or Mullis, um, with regards to the subject of stormwater fees. Um, it says, I was hoping you could forward a couple of questions to Stormwater Board for me. Number one, why did they decide to charge $5 a month more per residence than the maximum suggested in their study? Where's the extra money going? Two.
Maybe just in case she watches and we can just answer them as we're going. Because I think this is pretty much everything we covered.
Yeah.
That way we're not going, going back. But just a little recap for.
Yeah, so, I, I know that was brought up, uh, and one of the questions that one of the gentlemen had asked, uh, Mr. Dalton, uh, with regards to the information that was sent out and it was just, again, the maximum amount that, that was sent out. Um, so, again, there, nothing's been decided. It's just the, the larger amount that went out for everybody's information. So, um, we're, we're still in the process of, of reviewing this. Number two is the town of St. John now going to take responsibility for maintaining the various retention ponds and subdivisions throughout town. We're currently paying for maintenance of our two ponds through our HOA. It's my understanding, I live in, here in town, we pay for maintenance on our, our pond. Um, actually, our several ponds, so, um, as far as I know, there's going to be no changes on that and, uh, each, each subdivision. Yes, sir?
Uh, we're cautioned. I don't know if I would reply to that because your ordinance right now says the, the town will take care of all retention ponds after two years after it's constructed.
Okay, well, well.
Public Works Director, uh.
I'm not gun-wrenching.
That's a good, that's a good statement. It is good. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I would hold off on that answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate your, your input. Uh, okay. Number three, are you currently holding the developers of new construction subdivisions responsible for stormwater management and MS4 compliance? If not, why not? Obviously, we've had discussions on that. You know, they, they are, they have responsibilities and we're actually here to enforce those responsibilities as, as, you know, we continue to move forward and, and I think we're starting on a, a good, good foundation. And, uh, I think you'll, you'll see some changes as, as these plans go through the review process and, and through the planning commission. Okay, what are the three projects mentioned in the study that are currently being planned? I think we, Bob, you had talked about those particular projects, um, in, in our, in your discussions before. I don't have those in front of me, but, uh, that was, was already discussed. And finally, will this require any new employees for the town and who will interview and approve them based on their qualifications? I think that's still to be determined as, as.
What is that?
We move forward.
I don't have that one.
Oh, it was on the backside.
Oh, okay.
There's two sides.
All right.
Uh, so, uh, thank you for forwarding my questions. I look forward to an open and honest reply from the Stormwater Board. Sharon Malas, 13631 Empress Lane. So, I, I thank her for her comments. Was there any more? Oh, okay. Uh, there was another one from an email address. I don't know if there's a Mary there, Robert is the, uh, from the email address. It's a Stormwater Inc. increase. My husband and I are questioning why the stormwater rates are going up at this time. We're also questioning why it's going from 10 to 15, $10 to $15. We are getting an increase in garbage rates in our property taxes now. Uh, why wasn't this done previously? It's a lot to take on at one time when you're retired and on a fixed income, so. Um, with, with that said, I mean, the rates aren't going up because nothing's been established. So, we're, we're actually here to initially talk about these, um, these options that were provided, uh, to us. Um, I understand everything's going up and, you know, it's just, uh, it's one of those things that the, the town is, is behind on as our surrounding communities are, have been involved in, in these stormwater fees for, for many years. And I think that was about it, right? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we got those into record, um, as we're moving on. Is there any old business?
I think we should try to meet about, uh, an attorney.
Can you formally close the public comment before you move on?
Uh, and at this time, we'll, we'll go ahead and close the, uh, public comment. So, with regards to any old business, is there any old business? Saying none, new business?
Did you want to bring something up about an attorney, Joe?
Yeah, do you want to sit down and somehow work, uh, do the same scenario? Try to get an attorney to represent us in this whole process? Because we're getting, we're walking very slow to do it the right way.